Look, I mean, that's Jeff.
Do you members online? Good morning and good afternoon. It is twelve ten P M on Thursday, April fourth. This is the April Finance Committee meeting. I'm Kelly Lessons, a board member and chair of the Finance Committee.
Andy Holman, board member, or is I chief human resources officer?
Andy Rappel, Chief Financial Officer.
Eric Bryant, Superintendent.
Matt Berman. Yes, I, you, I, sir.
Katie Grant, Executive Assistant.
America Sullivan, Executive Assistant.
And online, do we have any board members?
None that I see so far.
Okay, well, we will allow the meeting to go forward. It's been noticed. We have guests here and hopefully more board members join us. The first item on the agenda is from Berman and Defoeo two thousand and twenty four, which is a new study courtesy of Iser. And the study is our Alaska teacher salaries competitive. So I'd like to turn it over to our guest.
Thank you, Kelly. Yes, I'm Matt Berman. I'm a professor of economics at Iser. And my colleague, Ian Defoeo, sends her apologies. I'd be here, but it's not able to. So, yeah, I, I could talk about Alaska teacher salaries and the recent work that we did. And maybe if you could put the next slide and state. So this became an issue when, back in the fall, when the Alaska Department of Labor tried to do a little report about Alaska teacher salaries. And it was, well, it got into a big ish fight because it apparently was suppressed by the government administration for reasons. They didn't like the headline, basically. There's not a unit in the study that was particularly problematic, but the headline was. And of course, the fact that it was censored or attempted censorship created a firestorm and came news. And then, of course, eventually they, it was released, but you can see it was actually released obscurely in there. But, you know, everybody eventually looked at it and said, well, there's nothing really surprising here anyway. So this caused me, I looked at the study and said, well, we really need to look a little bit more closely at this because it's got a lot of issues. So, next slide. So what we decided to do is take a look at the data that they presented in that study and just look a little more closely at it. And, and this is sort of a summary of what the study, their study showed. This is the same data that I went back, the data that they use. It's nothing surprising. This is from the National Center for Education Statistics. And it shows that Alaska teacher salaries, if you just look at the numbers, they're, they're a little higher, about ten percent higher than the national average. They've been that way for the past twenty five years or so. And in the, before that, they were actually substantially higher than they have been recently. Because it was a big, during the nineteen seventies, the pipeline boom, nineteen eighties, the national recession, but Alaska booming, the teacher salary, you know, the school districts had money and they had, they had to pay teachers a lot more because they don't work in structures somewhere else. So they make tons of money. So that was sort of a way to. But we don't want to sort of leave it that because as you, when you think about it, Alaska teacher salaries, this is all teachers all over the state. And many of these teachers are in rural Alaska. They're in places with high living costs. And Alaska cost of living are, you know, people think that they're higher, not higher than every place in the country, but they're higher. A lot of those. So we want to look more closely at that. So you go to the next slide, see what we, yeah. Well, first, we looked at rural Alaska. And I thought, when we looked at it on a, just teacher F T E basis, about eighteen percent of the teachers are in districts with pretty high living costs. It's not a lot, but it's enough that when we look at the, the way that the school foundation formula adjusts for geographic cost differential, that makes a big difference. And another thing that we looked at was that, well, Alaska prices, sort of a mitigating factor here is that Alaska prices didn't rise as fast as prices in the rest of the nation during the nineteen eighties and nineties. We had a lot of big box stores moving in and Costco and, and. You notice, you know, certainly in Anchorage, especially in Anchorage, but also other places where we have big box stores. Where they, you know, you have to, the, the, you know, cost of living wasn't. So that's sort of mitigating factor over time. And then we looked at sort of Anchorage prices relative to the nation. And so we looked at a variety of different things here. And if you go to the next slide, it sort of shows generally what we found. The first adjustment, just looking at rural Alaska, well, that actually turned out to, if you adjust for the, just using the geographic cost differential relative to Anchorage in the school foundation formula, that made a big difference. And, you know, people think about that, so the geographic cost differential, that applies to the B S A, so it, it applies to all educational expenses. But, so is it really fair to use that for teachers? Well, it turns out that, that we, I was one of the people in Iser did the latest version of geographic cost differential that's being used. And we did it by measuring teacher salaries. So, so we are using teacher salaries to do it. So we figure that it's pretty good, it's appropriate to represent teacher salaries. And so when we do that, that kind of turns it from going, that actually drops Alaska's salaries relative to national average by about twenty percent. See, we go from being, say, eleven or twelve percent above the national average to being twelve percent below the national average. Just from just saying if we use Anchorage or price, you know, Anchorage prices. And then if we look, well, it goes, it goes from twelve percent above to like six percent below. It's not that much. Sorry, I were estimating, it's like eighteen percent reduction. And then if you go to look at Anchorage, well, there are a variety of ways of adjusting Anchorage salaries relative to the nation. And there's no, like, single good index. And we chose, we looked at the various options and decided that the best thing that we thought would work would be using this, this, well, it's a, it's a differential that's, that's done by the community, the Council for Community and Economic Research, which is known as, Acro, it used, it rebranded themselves. I think it was Association of the Community, whatever they called it. But they rebranded themselves, the same, same index, same people. And, and it's, it's a, an index that's used for, it's basically a subscription service that businesses use to decide how much they should compensate executive, their managers, when they move them from one place to another. So it's, it's generally for managers, because a lot of smaller places like Anchorage and Caribou right there, that you don't have maybe senior executives, but you have little managers. And so this is what they used to, and we thought that was probably the best representation of the kind of, you know, the salaries that teachers had. So we used that. And that is another, you know, brought us down substantially below the national average. See, that's, Anchorage isn't the most expensive place to live in the nation by any means, but it was above the average. Certain places are higher than Anchorage, like Hollywood, Washington D C, and San Francisco. But there are also places a lot lower, like Akron, Ohio, and Tulsa, and places in the south. So that's sort of where we end up. And, and, and so once we do all these adjustments, Alaska teachers are substantial below the national average. Now, is this a new phenomenon? Well, maybe you should put it on the next slide. And this looks at, again, over time, going back to the, the, at decade old, going back to nineteen seventy, sixty nine, seventy school year. And you see that, well, in the seventies and eighties, it wasn't quite the same. But since nineteen ninety nine, we've been at this sort of level. By the way, I have bars for the decades and then lines for the past few years. I want to make sure people don't jump to conclusions, think that the time scale is the same. Because the time scale is different. And so to represent them, all in one graph, I just sort of changed the indicator there. But it's the same. You see, it's been pretty, pretty similar, about twenty, twenty five percent below the national average for twenty five years. Now, we think of, right now, we're facing a much, you know, Anchorage didn't used to have really a big problem with teacher shortage. But now, now it's hitting Anchorage too. So something's clearly changed. What I emphasize here, that when we look at it, it's not relative, not Anchorage, not Alaska relative to the U S. Something else is going on. So maybe if you go to the last slide here. Well, actually, I shouldn't, I should go back, maybe you should go back. Can you, can you go reverse to the very first one? Come back up, very first slide. Yeah, there. Now you can see what's actually changed. What's happened, changed has served. You see over the past year, so this ends in twenty twenty one, unfortunately, because the latest data we have from the National Center for Education Statistics is twenty twenty one, twenty two school year. You see that in COVID, there was this inflation in the nation and teacher salaries nationally didn't keep up with inflation. So you see that, that gray line there. There was just, you know, you see that erosion of teacher salaries nationally. Well, Alaska's were similar to the nation, but the nation had, didn't keep up. And so we have a national teacher shortage. And this, this is making it so that Alaska is having to compete in a different market from what it was three or four years ago. So maybe if you can go back to the, you know, to back where we were. So what does this mean for Anchorage? Well, this was, we were looking at statewide average. And the statewide average that's sort of published by the National Center for Education Statistics is an average, it's an average of all the teachers. It's adjusted for full time employment, but it's not adjusted for experience. It's not adjusted for where the teachers are. And so it doesn't represent any particular school district or a community. So what does it say about Anchorage? Well, we've done this previous research, I think we presented last summer, maybe. And I talked about that showed, what is the difference for different school districts in Alaska? You see that when we looked at sort of rank at the, just looking at teacher qualifications, you had equivalent qualifications. Many of these rural districts that are in the dark purple there, they're not able, they'd have to pay a lot more relative to Anchorage. And that anchors that red square there is showing that we, we're pretty close there. But this was in nineteen, in twenty seventeen. So this is before the recent problem. And there are some districts that are even doing better than Anchorage. And in particular, Matu is a little bit better, according to our data, but not much. And Juno and some of the Sitka are doing, you know, teachers like to go there. They go there and they want to stay there, they like the community. And so they're actually even doing even better a little bit than Anchorage. But Anchorage is pretty close to the top. So it's, it's, when we look at statewide average, it's, it's pretty clear to us that the bigger problems in rural Alaska, but Anchorage now has a problem because the nation has a problem. So maybe if you can, a slide here and just to summarize, Alaska teachers' salaries are substantially below the national average according to our, our estimates. And it's, it's not new, it's been going on for twenty five years. And, but now we have a bigger problem because of the nation, the national decline and teacher salaries are less competitive than we're actually. So that's all I have, the last slide is to say, well, any questions, have any interesting questions? And, and there is a link there at the bottom to the full study.
Which is also posted, I think, to board docs.
Yeah, it's, it's, that's the, that's the permanent U R L for that study. It's available.
Yeah.
I did have a question about the data in general. When, when you're looking at the cost of living differential, is it just the prices? Or does it take into effect that, like, I used to live in a place where it snowed, but didn't have two sets of tires in my car? I didn't have a snow blower, I didn't have water. I had some heavy clothes, but not some. Does it take into advantage the kind of things you wind up having to buy here versus?
Hawaii?
Versus Hawaii?
Yes, yeah, in theory it does. In practice, well, not necessarily. But, so this is a, this is a big question and it's an example of, so there are other ways to sort of compare salaries across, or cost of living differences. And I should say, without, you know, the N E A does a study, they publish a study, a study of teacher salaries, try to adjust your cost. And they find that Alaska is only, is only about two percent more expensive than the rest of the country. And I looked at that and said, well, that doesn't really, you know, quite make sense. Because that's the state as a whole, and not Anchorage, but the state as a whole. And so I decided, okay, I can have to get into the weeds and look at this. And because you'll see people referencing the N E A study.
Oh, personal question.
By the way, I, full disclosure, I'm, I'm a University of Alaska anchor. We're represented, our unit is the F T E, is the A F T, not the, not the N E A. But anyway, the, the, the N E A study uses, it's a national study, that's for interest. It uses the regional price parity index from the Bureau of Economic Analysis. So I said, okay, I have to get into the weeds. I can talk to people more about it. But basically, the, the, the regional price parity is, first of all, it's, it's most, it uses, it uses consumer price index weights for most of the products. So if it's in the Anchorage, there's only one consumer price index in Alaska, and that's the Anchorage, for Anchorage. So it uses prices and weights for most items. So if it's in the Anchorage Consumer Price Index, you have to buy more snow tires. I don't think it is, but if it is, that's in there. But, you know, that applies to, say, Vermont too. So it's not just Alaska. But when it, there doesn't use, you know, just, just to, I want to labor this. There are also a couple of items in regional price parity where they punt, because they don't have the Alaska data. And, and they use, for housing, they use the American Community Survey. American Community Survey is statewide, it's census data, it has rents. And, but it doesn't control very well for quality. So you're in rural Alaska where you have people renting really crummy houses and paying low rent. And, and that's not factored in. So I don't really trust that. And housing is one of the things that is the most, the most high in Anchorage development than national average according to the C two, the C two E R index. The other thing, another thing they don't have is healthcare. They use national prices for healthcare. Now, healthcare, you know, in Alaska, just, you think about it, well, almost half of Alaskans have healthcare provided for them. If you're tribal member, you've got healthcare through tribal system. If you're a veteran, you have healthcare. If you're military, you have healthcare and childcare. You've got Medicaid, Medicare, that is up to almost half of Alaskans. Well, it doesn't apply to most teachers. So they have to pay the full rate. And there we know Alaska is the most expensive nation for healthcare. So those, those are the reasons why I don't, I didn't want to use the N E A study. But you'll see that people want to push back against this, or we'll cite it, of course.
I appreciate that. The N E A side figures are cited by people.
Yes.
And they've never seen the right. And of course, they treat it as being heavily sanded teachers. The, the other thing that, to me, is kind of an East Coast thing, because I think housing is one of the most disappointing things to the people we recruit here. They, because they can't really get a good grasp until they're here, they have a job, and they're looking at what they can buy with that. And, and my experience back east is if you didn't like what you were living in, you just started driving out of town. Then you could either spend the same amount of money and get something nicer, or you could spend less and get something that's just further away. Not an option here.
Well, you can, you got to go to the valley, though. You're going quite a ways away.
Got to head to Eagle River or Matu. But, yeah, that's, that's kind of limited too. And the east, you can go in any direction. And, and you can pick areas that are quite rural by East Coast standards. They're quite a bit cheaper, but you just can't. And you can grow your own food, you can do some other stuff. But it, it just aren't options here for a lot of people. I, I, I think your information is a lot more detailed than a lot of the stuff I've seen other places. And yet I think there's still a couple of dimensions to it that, that make life hard here.
Yeah, I was, I've recently been, a couple of places that I was just looking at. One was in Washington, D C. It's more expensive than Anchorage. Another was, it was in Chicago. And Chicago is, it's not, it's actually less.
Depending on who you choose to live.
Cover of Chicago, well, where my, personally, I was visiting, I was a young, young person right out of college and with a new baby and, yeah, kind of situation. There, it was less than here, but, you know, it varies.
I saw a hand behind you from Corey East, and then I had a question. And then maybe we should move to the next.
First of all, thank you for all your efforts in this regard. It's, um, anyway, you're talking to the choir, as they say. I think it's really, what's frustrating is that it's so hard to incorporate significant changes, increases in some of our urban competitors down in the lower forty eight, because they've made some significant increases in salaries recently. And also the lack of pension on, right, on, on the whole thing. But I, I was wondering, are you, I think you've done this already, but are you also studying the real impact and the number of educators who are leaving the state, are leaving the profession? Because we're already at ten percent of our staff who resigned this year.
Well, the answer is yes, we are. And the challenges that our data, now we're working with the state, need data because it's, it's about everybody. And it's about a year and a half behind. And so we don't have twenty twenty two, twenty three school year debt. And we hope that might happen in, you know, in the months or two. We won't have this year until, you know, we won't be able to. That's the downside, but yes, we're looking at, thank you. And looking at trying to look at the pension too. We'll have more to talk about, maybe when we get something we can share, we'll be happy to talk.
Um, thank you for all those questions, the presentation, the research. Um, I guess I wanted to go maybe up to, sort of, there's like a twenty four, twenty five percent section of our graph, and then sort of like the six, six percent. I guess my, my understanding is that.
There, yeah, next one.
That one, yeah. So is that suggesting with your most current data from F Y twenty two, that for Anchorage, we're about six percent below the national average? Is that, no?
No, it's saying that when you, sorry, it's, I'm adjusting to the price level of Anchorage, but it's statewide.
Okay.
So Anchorage doesn't get any adjustment when we do that, but the rest of it. So it's, these are averages. So the average, it's not one school district. It's, it's taking statewide average and saying, well, when you account for the teachers teaching in high cost areas like rural Alaska, that reduces the, the average salary accounting for that factor to something that's about six percent below the national, the national average. It's still the average for the state, not Anchorage.
Okay.
Again, we don't, we didn't separate out Anchorage teacher salaries separately. And there are two problems with doing that. We could, we have the data, but there are two problems with doing that. One is that the, the experienced level of Anchorage is higher than the national average and more experienced teachers here. So that raises the salary, and if you adjust for that, it's not fair. And, and the other is that, the, well, I mean, that's, that's the, the other thing is that, is that to get Anchorage salaries, you would be using a different source from the N C E S. And that's, we're not sure that it's exactly comparable. It supposedly is, but there's even some manipulations there with the data that we don't see.
Thank you.
So, yes, it's, again, it's, it's going down, it's, we used to answer the question.
Okay.
Apologize, but.
Well.
We, we like to do that, because that's, because that's what I do, but. Apologize, but we, we like to do that, because that's, because that's what I do, but.
Great. Um, well, I thank you for your time. I wanted to get to a couple of items, other items on our agenda. Um, but, uh, appreciate, appreciate your being here today and sharing your work.
Okay.
Great, thanks. Um, okay, so for community members, we'll just give the, um, report as the docs, and, um, I guess I wonder whether the presentation can also be posted to more docs? Do we have that now?
Maybe if I can get him to send it to me.
Absolutely.
Or.
Now, can you?
I think it already was.
Can you send, um, this is online, but I just wanted to get the slide deck posted to more docs.
Oh, do you have that? I'll take that. I bet you can.
Okay. All right, well, we can follow up with that, but that would be my intention to have them both available. Okay, so the second item.
Yes, let me know if I can do that, that's okay.
The second item on the agenda is fund balance projections. Um, and I should probably let America get situated there. Um, but I will turn this item over to Yaratliff, our CFO.
Thank you, um, America, can I have privileges to share, please? Is that the host of the stage?
Steve has to leave that for you.
Um, do you just want, I mean, you can just pull it up when you're into, maybe scroll down. Okay. So just want to walk through our fund balance projections as of the end of March. Um, last time we gave you an update was in, I believe, uh, early January. Not a whole lot, things have changed, we've kind of walked through some of the larger items we have, or variances, anyway. Uh, the first one is our, our student fees. Again, this is about what we projected back in January. Uh, this is largely collections for, um, sports activities, parking. Uh, and it also includes, uh, tuition assistance or from lower UConn. So as they take their King Tech classes, um, just projecting a little bit less on that end, and if we get less there, we'll spend less as well, because that's just an actual pass-through cost. We do lower UConn. Interest earnings are well above what we projected, um, with the federal prime rate going up. I don't know what it is now, it was up like eight, something. But it's, uh, we continue to see realized a lot more interest earnings than what we had budgeted for this year. Uh, that could turn around as a mark-to-market approach. If we have, um, a couple of bad months in our realized value of those investments go down, then so too would that line item. E-rates about where we want it to be, and then the other local revenues is, um, you see about thirty-one point eight million under. Uh, in context, we budgeted thirty-two point four five million dollars in fund balance, so that's reflective of not actually recognizing fund balances and actual revenue. Um, so all things being equal, we'd expect to be the thirty-two point four five million, but we'd gain a little bit of other local revenues on, on top of that. Uh, state foundation funding, the reduction in number of students below what we had actually projected or put in our budget is the primary driver of that, offset some by a little bit increase in our intensive needs numbers. And then the state earthquake reimbursements, we've gotten forty-eight thousand on the state side and about four hundred and thirty-three thousand on the, uh, federal side. Typically, we'll come back to the board with these items, uh, and direct those towards a FEMA-related project. So while it's a revenue source now, we'll end up probably transferring that money out to capital projects at some point. Uh, otherwise, federal impact aid is tracking pretty well with what we expected, and JRTC Medicaid reimbursements are coming in lower than what we had budgeted as well, but not as much different than what we presented last time. So overall, about thirty million dollars, uh, are various between our budget and our projection. Um, with, uh, actual budget, it varies to the thirty-two point four five for fund balance. So all in all, you know, fairly close to what we'd expect, a little bit more revenue than what, um, that we budgeted.
Good question, and maybe you do or don't know the answer to this, um, with respect to the federal impact aid. Um, I think I read in a recent article, um, Clearbase closed, um, a school on a base, and the top military commander in the state um, has now suggested that the federal government may be taking a closer look at federal impact aid.
They very well could. I mean, the current, faced on the number of kids living on base, not necessarily attending school on base.
Okay.
Uh, so that's how we calculate that when we're doing the applications to the Impact Aid Office, it's, are you residing here? Because a lot of our students, we don't have a high school on base, where they, most of those kids go to Bartlett, West, and.
Eagle River.
Eagle River.
Okay, but you haven't received any notice that the federal impact aid is somehow at, at heightened degree of risk?
We haven't, and I suspect, you know, if they were to relook that program, then, uh, it's probably the base-specific or impact areas specific, probably. But, um, we haven't heard any notice that they're, they're changing that, but the base commander there may have insights that we don't also.
Okay.
So that's the revenue picture, uh, going down to the next one. I, maybe someone can zoom in on that a little bit, but, for our salaries and benefits, this pretty well tracks what we had presented last time as well. Um, you'll see we're going to be pretty well under budget in every category except for substitutes, and well, that's pretty much it. And then we have the negative attrition line. But really, we're seeing those savings, it's really just across the board. Um, the only one that's really almost tracking the budget would be our principals, which, you know, if one of those is that, we immediately put an acting principal in place, so we have to have someone leading those buildings, so we don't really have prolonged vacancies in the principal ranks very long, but other jobs we, we do, we don't always fill those immediately. But those, uh, paraprofessionals and, um, our professional and technicals gone up considerably, like that percentage of vacancies that we've had is quite a bit higher than we've had in recent years. That's generally tracked, tracked more district administration, but, um, we're having harder times filling some of those. Uh, you know, our, our accountants turnover, finance, tech, HR, personnel turns over. Uh, all the, those turnovers are really kind of contributing to what the, uh, variance there. Um, and then you'd expect to see the substitutes over budget when we have so many of the paraprofessionals and our certificated staff that far under budget. But overall, we're about three million dollars under budget on our salaries, uh, less than one percent. Um, for benefits, uh, about the same thing, most of it tracks, uh, the percentages track, if we don't spend the salary, we typically don't spend the benefits. The medical ends up getting skewed by either sixty-day waits or medical waivers, so is the folks waive medical insurance. Uh, we have more, we should have more, uh, savings there if they do that. Uh, the other benefits, that was a, there's a little bit of a change there from last time. You'll see that percentage, that thirteen point five percent variance there is tracks higher than like the Persenters. A lot of that is, um, the recognized savings on, uh, workers' comp. So we projected to have about a one point two million dollar savings in our workers' comp. Uh, what we actually expense on our accruals when we run payroll versus what we're actually paying out in workers' comp claims. So we zero those two out every year. Uh, so, so far, we've got about a million, million-two savings, projecting that up to the end of the year. So hopefully that maintains, I mean, that can kind of skew if we have a couple of large claims. Um, we might not actually see an expense until next year, years out, and that's going to be reserved in fund balance. So that kind of washes out when we start talking about the reservations for fund balance. Um, for our services. Andy, what's, I'm sorry, what's the benefit of attrition again? So that's our estimates for how many people are going to be vacant, vacant, um, and then. So it's just a savings? Yeah, it's just really a recognition of how many people are going to waive medical insurance and how many people are going to have vacant positions or cost differentials or turnover, you know, it's all those savings for unfilled accounts. Um, so we do estimate that each year. Uh, this year, we're, we're, you know, we have about twenty or thirty-four million dollars in those attrition accounts in total. Uh, that's going to be up to a little over forty-one million for next year's budget. We're trying to account for more vacancies, more waivers.
Which is one of the, when we talk about the level of risk that's embedded in the FY twenty-five budget, we're just balancing the budget in part based on.
Yep.
Crossing our fingers that we're going to continue to have worker shortages.
Sure, I mean, there's like an economic downturn, and there's a lot of job losses in the private sector, typically they'll come over to government jobs, and if we start filling those vacancies, then we very well could be in a little bit of trouble there, so. Some will be cognizant and keep watch, keep watch on, but, um, at the same time, we don't want to have, you know, fifty, ten, fifteen million dollars left over at the end of the year that could have been put into our educational system and helping our students. So it's kind of a balancing act, and it's kind of, it's really hard to predict at this point, but the last couple of years, it doesn't seem to have improved a whole lot.
Question, maybe it's appropriate or not appropriate at this point in time, but, um, does the district, I mean, do we have a sort of a triaged approach to vacancies? I mean, getting bus driver vacancies filled is critical. Um, we have vacancies across the board. I mean, is, are, are, is the administration leading the charge on filling, you know, these vacancies more than these vacancies? Or, I mean, is that, I mean, every position has, you know, it's an ecosystem, every position plays a part. I guess what's, what is the approach to?
To your question about a triage, I think some of the requests from the administration or, or even the board to do things like bonuses for paraprofessionals or increase that classroom differential for our self-contained paraprofessionals were really an attempt to say, these are, these vacancies are creating more stress in the system, so we really want to try to incentivize filling these now, whether or not that was, you know, it obviously didn't get that number down to zero, but we did do those types of incentives across all positions.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, under our services, we're about two million left in utilities. That was another thing we tried to address in next year's budget, is getting those closer to actuals. Um, so you'll see our, well, our utility costs are expected to go up, our budget is either remaining stagnant or coming down maybe a little bit uh, to try to get closer to zero there. There's some savings on rent and leases as the lease for this building, uh, was renegotiated and will take, it has taken effect for the last few months of the year. So do have some savings there. Um, travel and registrations, just folks not going to many places. That money's not always all spent. The unallocated, the remaining amount for their five point four million, uh, by and large, that's the money when the charter schools, their enrollments didn't come back as high as they projected for this year too, so we have some savings. Um, as we recoup money from them that they weren't actually due, that they budgeted. Uh, indirect costs is pretty close to what we anticipate, and then the other contracted services, another fairly large line item in there. The savings in that is really from three, three buckets. Um, there's instructional contracted services which would include like, uh, our tuition to UAA for, to pay for the classes there, that are, that are students who are going through MCS. Um, there are savings on our, uh, maintenance agreements for software, and then, uh, legal fees is our other kind of bucket of savings on the, on those. Uh, the other ones within those kind of instructional contracted services with, is at our correspondent schools where we have money budgeted for students to take classes, kind of one-offs. But if you have that many students, that adds up, and then it does, it always gets spent in different categories than what they expect, just based on, uh, parent preference. But overall, about ten million dollars in savings in there. Um, and then the rest of it is really pretty close to our actuals. The supplies and equipment, you'll see supplies under budget and equipment over budget. Some of those equipment line items rolled together with supplies for budget checking, so our system will allow one to be over and one to be under, but in total, it'll be under budget. And then, uh, other expenditures, uh, about two hundred and forty thousand over budget. Predominantly, that's due to a, um, we had some rental fees that had been on the books from about two thousand thirteen with, uh, we had a receivable for it, for, I think it was for UAA. But during that time, we also had a shared agreement with UAA that wouldn't charge for building lease of, or building use of certain facilities. So I think the, the receivables that were out there were incorrect at that point, so things, we were never expecting payment, is what I understand, and then once we found out about, we reversed that, and it had to show as a, a cost, because we, uh, incurred it as revenue at some point. Aside from that, we'll be about twenty million, twenty-one million, uh, under budget on our expenditure side, which is contributing to some of the money that we have left over to be able to use for next year's, um, to offset next year's deficits. So that's what goes into the seventy-one million that we're gonna, that helps us, that helped to achieve the seventy-one million that we are using to offset next year's deficit.
So no significant changes then as far as the projected amount that we'll have available to offset that FY twenty-five deficit, that reliance on seventy-one, so we're.
So if we go down, we're tracking. Yeah, if we go down to the next page. Um, so we'll be down about nine million dollars in real money. Uh, changes in those designated fund balances, kind of, if, we'll have an increase in our our reserve for encumbrages as that middle school move project didn't, some of those, a lot of those costs are going to occur. The, just the stuff's not going to come in until probably after the new year. Some of them might come in, so there's going to be, but you'd, so you'd see higher expenditures and lower change in designated fund balances, uh, but the same amount of spendable fund balance. Um, so if you go down a little further to the end, the amount above, below five percent, that seventy-seven million, we had initially projected that at about seventy-one million, and that's what we decided to spend. So we're a little bit above what we had projected for the seventy-one million, uh, which is good, because that, I only have the six million dollars in actual spendable money is a pretty slim margin. Um, so the current projections have about eleven million, and truly spendable money, still not a lot for an organization our size, but, uh, better than six million. So it is coming up, uh, hopefully these numbers come up a little bit more as we go along and figure out how the rest of the year is going to shake out, but we still do have April, May, and June, and that June timeframe, we're trying to really reconcile everything. That's when, uh, you might see some changes, so. Uh, so with that, any questions on the fund balance?
Seeing none, I think I'll go through mine, we'll continue to move on. Um, okay, thank you for that, uh, check-in. The third item was an FY twenty-five budget update.
And I would say we didn't use any of the money that, in that, that was in the state letter for that, the sixteen point six million that was, uh, the Fed said state Otis. Uh, that's not built into the projections anywhere, so that's uncertain at this point.
And, yeah, so this is in reference to the maintenance of equity, uh, issue that has come before um, the state, um, and so we are just kind of awaiting further conversation and resolution between the state of, between this, uh, Department of Education and the US Department of Education, and it sounds like there will be some hearings, uh, in June or next week from my most recent assessment.
Yes.
Watching yesterday's Senate Education Committee.
Yeah. So we'll keep an eye on that, um, see what happens, so.
Yeah. Um, I guess any other FY twenty-five budget updates?
Nope, right now, we're still going as planned.
Okay, great. And then as far, I, I mean, that sort of segues into item number four, you know, any legislative updates that seem relevant to our financial position, other than waiting to hear about the maintenance of equity?
No, I mean, they reintroduced a version of SB one forty and HB three ninety-two, I believe. That had a lot of the same provisions and amounts in there, so continue to watch that and see where it goes.
But does that, do we know, does that have another hearing at this point?
I don't. I'm not sure of the stats, I haven't really heard any updates on it in a while.
It's presented earlier.
Yeah.
Okay, so not much, uh, no affirmative information coming out of the legislature at this point in time. Um, okay, well, with that, I will say that, um, we can move to item C, which is upcoming meetings on May second, and then I will be unavailable on June sixth, so we can talk about what that means. Um, but we will certainly, uh, reconvene on May second, uh, for the financial meetings. Thank you all very much.
A legislative update is more substantial than.
We might have one. Um, although the session probably will still be ongoing, so, um, seems like an early June update. We may have more, but.
Yeah.
Okay, I will move to adjourn at our meeting today. Okay, we're adjourned.
I'm just.
All right, thanks.